Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who is interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator, controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator, controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners. Today's date is 3rd September 28th, 2017. It's 8:30 a.m., and it's our regular county board meeting. We'll begin today with roll call. Madam Clerk?
Good morning. Commissioners Vonck?
Here.
Antor?
Here.
Morgan?
Here.
Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Here.
Commissioner Steck?
Here.
Ponstein?
Here.
Voorhees?
Present.
Kalman?
Present.
Breeby?
Here.
Mast?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Hennessy?
Here.
Tallon?
Here.
Womack?
Here.
Present.
Skaggs?
Here.
Chair Saulfeld?
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 present, zero absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll move now to our invocation and pledge of allegiance, and I'll call on Commissioner Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's all rise and bow our heads. Dear God, we thank you for bringing us together today. We pray for all those affected by the recent hurricanes and floods, and pray that supplies can get to those in need. We pray for a level heads in this time entity in the world and threats to our country. And we pray for you to provide us with patience and guidance, to see the best in each other, and to help us heal all the divide in our country. We thank you for allowing us all to serve our great community, and we ask you to direct us in our service. Amen.
My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Vice Chair. We move now to Agenda Item 5, which is our Special Order of Business. We'll begin today with our third quarter Quality Service Employee Award. And I'll ask Darius Quinn, our Human Resources Manager, that heads up the committee that chooses this individual, to come forward to the podium. And while he's coming, this word that was established in January 2010, when Kent County launched the Employee Recognition Program, to recognize employees who have provided outstanding customer service to the citizens of Kent County and to the employees and internal clients of the county. Darius?
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the seventh year that the Employee Recognition for Quality Service has been in place. And this is the first time that a Kent County prosecutor has been awarded with this special recognition.
Becker, I wonder why that is.
But to our commissioners, we're here this morning to recognize Dan Heldur, who will be Kent County Prosecuting Attorney's Office. And the individuals, the individual who nominated Dan, this is what they had to say. They said that Dan spoke at our Michigan State Police Citizens Academy 61. He did an awesome job explaining the many facets of the Prosecuting Attorney's Office in layman's lingo. We would have listened to him for hours. So that within itself may not sound so impactful. But Dan is also one of those individuals that I know personally. And when you meet him, he stands out to you. And in addition to that, Kent County Prosecuting Attorney Chris Becker states that Dan has been very involved with the Citizen Police Academy presentations. Not only has he done one for MSP, he has done it for the Kent County Sheriff and the Lowell Police Department and their police academy programs as well. In addition to this outreach effort within the office, Dan is vitally important to the Prosecuting Attorney's Office in assisting with technology issues. He is the point of contact with the Grand Rapids Police Department regarding body camera technology, which I have also personally witnessed some of your works as well. He also is involved with how it's shared with the office, how we share those videos with defense attorneys, and then to a jury. What Chris didn't say here is also how that is presented to the media. He's taught for the Prosecuting Attorneys Association of Michigan statewide. He is a teacher at the Video Trial School each year, instructing prosecutors across the state as to proper use of the technology in the courtroom. He is the person responsible for putting together diverse body camera and in-car videos regarding two police-involved shooting incidents here in Kent County for dissemination to the press and to... He consistently does over and above what he is asked to do in working with the office. So Dan, once again, congratulations, and you are recognized as the Kent County Employee of the Third Quarter.
Thank you. Chris, Dan. Congratulations again, Dan. We always appreciate having this award and the recognition for our good employees here in Kent County. We're going to move next to Agenda Item 5B, Special Order of Business, and we're going to hear from Grand Rapids Whitewater. I don't know who's starting. Familiar face. Yes. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Saulfeld, Commissioners. I'm Mike Gusweiler, President of the West Michigan Sports Commission. And it's my pleasure to be here today. I know that you're all very familiar and aware of the investment the county made in the organization of the West Michigan Sports Commission to get us started as an economic engine through sports tourism. And I'll be in front of you in about another month to let you know what we've been doing and how we've been growing that investment year over year, in fact, 10 years now. So we're about that. But I'm here today to support the Grand Rapids Whitewater project as we look at projects that will continue to build our infrastructure and offer that capability to continue to grow the possibilities around economic development. As a sports commission, we see the opportunities of transforming what is one of our greatest natural resources that comes through Kent County and through our center core, and offers the ability for both our residents to interact with the river in a different way, for the opportunity to gather more visitors and bring more visitors to our destination. It's truly a placemaker. And so for those purposes, the Sports Commission certainly supports this effort of GR Whitewater. And we're happy to be here today as they make a presentation to you on an update and what's happening with that. So with that, let me introduce to you the first Executive Director of Grand Rapids Whitewater, Mr. Richard Bishop.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, Richard.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to be here today. And thank you, Mike. And Mike made, he probably made part of my little comment here that this project is a game changer for this community. And I know all of you know that. But from someone who's done a project similar to this in Columbus, Georgia, it will do that. And I really appreciate the comment he made about community first. Because as we do projects like this, I like to think about, is it the best thing to do for the community? Because this river will be dynamic piece that pulls this community together for years and years to come. To bring it back to its original flow and recreate the rapids in this area is just going to be, it is going to be an economic impact. But the best thing about it is for this community to bring that river back, get those rapids back in it. So it is Grand Rapids. But thank you again for this opportunity. And I do want to give you a quick update on where we are in the process. We are well into, well above about 60% completion of our construction drawings and the design of the river. One of the big things that I'm sure all of you know, we will be relocating the Sixth Street Dam upriver. And a part of that is we're building or constructing this adjustable hydraulic structure. And that's a pretty dynamic piece of equipment. And we are in the process of doing our due diligence to make sure we have a really, really good understanding of what the long-term impact financially is of that piece of equipment. And I have to tell you, what we're finding, there's two over an hour, and those are working great. They've been in, both of them have been in operation for six years, very little maintenance. And so we're continuing to get our work done on that to make sure that when that's completed, we'll have a good understanding how that will operate and keep those sea lamprey from going upriver. Permitting, I know all of you are aware that we do have an endangered species. We are very close to submitting our Habitat Conservation Plan to the fisheries. We hope to have that, we don't hope, we will have that to them sometimes in November or before November. We can start that process. It will be a draft, and we'll be able to take their comments back and forth on the draft to get it exactly to where they want it. And then another part of it is, is that we have the Michigan Department of, the, excuse me, the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality permit we also have to do. And that will be submitted shortly after we get the EIS, the Environmental Impact Study, completed. Hopefully, sometimes mid-18, we'll have that all in process. All these end in hand with each other. Another big part of it is the city will own this project as far as the property that we have to get. We've got about 26 parcels that we have to acquire up and down the river. And the city is well into that process, and hopefully, sometimes middle of 18, all those will be in hand so that we can move forward. Currently, we have about $15 million in pledges, and we're getting ready to start that campaign to continue that process. Those pledges are a combination of state, local, and federal dollars. And it's encouraging that at the federal level, this project, you know, it has some horsepower. Senator Stabenow, she, with her hard work in the last few months, she secured the Regional Conservation Partnership Program grant of $8.1 million. The good part about it's too far. About $4.8 million of that will be put into the river as part of the project for the river restoration. The rest of those funds will be in place to do water quality research and making things better for water quality in the Grand River Basin. So that's, that's good work on Senator Stabenow. In addition to that, Senator Peters is working on getting additional funds in the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission budget. And if that happens, all these funds will help us generate the money that's needed to, to construct especially the hydraulic structure and also other parts of the river. And then we currently continuing, and with her effort, with Senator Stabenow's effort, we've got $4.8 million of that money, of that eight secured for actually in-river work. We're continuing now to work with all these different agencies that are so involved in making this project what it needs to be. And, you know, we get questioned all the time about, it takes so long. From someone who's, again, who's done a similar project like this one, it just does. It's not that people are pushing back on the project just to get all the environmental impacts studies completed and getting all the engineering things done that's required for a project like this. It just takes time. So encouraged by what's happened before I got here. A lot of hard work was completed with Chris and Chip, and I appreciate the work that they've done. And Matt's a great partner in our office. So there's a lot of good work moving forward, and we appreciate the support that this commission has given us in the past years. And we will just continue to brief you as needed. We're open for any, any meetings that we need to have to get you up to speed if you have any additional information. So thanks again for the opportunity to be here this morning and give you this update. And I will let Steve, Steve up for final comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Good morning, Steve.
Good morning. Delighted to be here. I'm always struck when I stand in front of you. It wasn't that long ago to me that I sat in one of those seats, although my picture keeps moving down the hall. But I do appreciate the efforts that you made to serve the citizens of Kent County. It's extraordinary. And it's not easy, and it's getting harder all the time, it seems. And yet there you are in the breach, making it happen so very much for that service. I had the privilege yesterday being in the ribbon cutting at the Gerald R. Ford International Airport Authority and a group very ably led by Roger and also by Dan. And I, you know, the truth is, we stand there, and Roger had done something extraordinary. He'd gotten the private community to come up with $20 million for what is clearly a governmental project. He was recently doing some continuing education on airport management at a national convention, and people were lined up saying, how in the world did you do this? You know, how does this work? But of course, it's one of those signs of our community and what we are and how this comes together and how, in fact, the community supports each other in these collaborations to make things work and to move forward. Grant actions, you know, the retirement of the Triumvirate at the top of that organization kind of makes you think about what they did and how that came together. But of course, they didn't do it alone. At the top of project, of the creation of the Convention Arena Authority, at the very top of that is Kent County. And in fact, it was Kent County's leadership that allowed that to occur so that, in fact, that arena and convention center can be run well and in a business manner and efficiently, and then can create incredible success. And when you look at what's occurred around those buildings and what's occurred downtown, you can't help but know that that's at the seed of it, at least certainly part of the seed. And Kent County was the leader within, or it's just like it was the leader at the airport. Similarly, the West Michigan Sports Commission, whose idea was that, well, maybe Kent County's, maybe somebody else's, but it wouldn't have happened except for Kent County. You look at Millennium Park, another example where, in fact, Kent County took the lead. Wouldn't be there without Kent County, frankly. Is it, is, was the private involvement important? Of course it was. It is not a normal-looking county park. It's an extraordinary place that was benefited greatly, private community. But the truth is, Kent County was in the lead. Darryl used to talk, our former Administrator, Darryl Delavio, used to talk about transformative leadership, the ability to take the position you hold and use it to transform the community, to make it better, to make it something that it wasn't before you arrived. Another former county administrator, a guy named Harry Truman, once said that, that progress occurs when courageous and skilled leaders seize the opportunity to make things better. This is an extraordinary opportunity to make things better in this community. And it can't be, it cannot be overstated. There's an 18-foot drop in that river that we're working with. The National Whitewater Course that they built to train for the Olympics, and it's basically a cement channel that they built, is a 21-foot drop. We have naturally an 18-foot drop in a downtown area. I mean, to cure that natural amenity, to create something spectacular that would carry this community forward for 50, 100, 200 years, it's phenomenal. And I fear that if we let this opportunity go, if we do not seize this opportunity, that it will be, become harder and harder to do. So I'm here today to ask you to be those transformative leaders, to contribute to this effort, to help lead this effort, and specifically to allocate $2 million in the 2018 budget project. I greatly appreciate your, your service, greatly appreciate you allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions then from our Commissioners? Bishop Womack?
Sure. Definitely thank you for, for your work and the presentation this morning. I don't know if my question's focused back to Wayman, though. A couple, three years ago, we had the opportunity to apply for a $250 million federal grant. I don't know if people remember that, but we did. And that was for like all kinds of projects in the river. And I believe the rapid restoration was one of those projects in that 250 million. How have we watched all of those projects because we didn't get that federal money? And so, so again, I hear the request for 2 million. However, what, what are the priorities? What are our responsibilities in that list that made up a $250 million request? And are you all, you know, still in contact with the rest of those partners to make sure, you know, how you're impacting? Like, I know you're talking a lot with the rowing club and making sure the water's still going to be there because that has a huge impact on sports stuff and what have you, and lampreys and that. But that probably was a small portion of that $250 million ask.
Yeah, we've not, I would say, we've not kept careful track of what's happened since that effort took place. But we have interacted with Whitewater and the city, and they've benefited from that reconnaissance work that we did, and have used a lot of that information to lobby the federal government, as Steve and Mr. Richards spoke of. So that work was not in vain. We were able to capitalize on that work. It was a very collaborative effort. And I think if we hadn't done that, I don't think we would have been in the best place to work with our federal offices and our federal congressmen to make that happen. So that's what I would say.
Yeah, and I would add that Senator Peters' office made a commitment to me that they would continue to work with us to find, because we were not granted that grant, that they would continue to work with the county to find what they could in the same areas that we were looking. I have regular meetings with the mayor, and this is something that is high on our priority list as a joint to find that. And actually, there are some, you know, things that we're working on, including possibly connecting with the federal lobbyists that would help us in this regard as well. All right.
So David, I guess from our perspective, that was a, that was primarily flood mitigation. The Whitewater project would have been funded through that. We lost it in part because of the needs in Flint and other areas. But, but our relationships with the federal government are very, very strong. They're very interested in this project, particularly invasive species mitigation. The, the reality is, the feds have a problem with all waterways that come out of the, out of the Great Lakes and touch the oceans because of invasive species. So they're tremendously interested in this bladder that Richard talked about and this prevention because it's, while not unique, it's distinctive. And so they look at this as, in a sense, as a pilot. But we, they've been very supportive. We're still part of the federal partnership. So they have taken a project as, as they have other river projects and stay very close to it. So we're encouraged that more is coming from the federal government.
All right. Thank you. I have a question, and I don't know how much you can say at this time, but can you talk a little bit about some of the other commitments you have gotten from other entities, jurisdictions, governments, whatever?
Yeah, certainly. Richard, you might want to help because I'm going to stumble through this. I am on the Board of Whitewater, but like some board members, I don't always pay full attention.
We have about $5.7 million in private funds committed. We have about $4.8 in federal funds committed, and then another, right at $3 million in local funds committed.
The local funds?
Local from downtown Grand Rapids, Inc.
Okay. Now, has the city, I know that they're working with getting the land. Have they committed at this point?
They have not yet, but we are working on an MOU with the city, and I think, I'm that that will come.
Okay. Very good. Commissioner Womack?
A few questions. Have you identified management for sustaining this and making sure?
Yes, a great question. Yes, there's a group of individuals, and that committee is actually led by the mayor, who, and it has representatives from the Fisheries and Wildlife, the local folks here with Grand Rapids Whitewater. They will be plan put together to manage the hydraulic structure. That is critical as we move forward to get all of our permits, because if we don't have that in place, it will be hard to get a permit because that's, that's an important piece of this project. And that's why we are doing our due diligence now to make sure that we know what the financial impacts are long-term for that adjustable hydraulic structure. And based on what I mentioned earlier, it's, it's very doable, and we have full confidence that all that'll be together as a part of the permitting process.
Do you know about jobs that may come with this, even temporary, temporary jobs or permitting jobs?
Yeah, you know, I wish I could actually tell you that number, but from my experience in the project that we did in Columbus, a number that I'm sure we're all very conscious of is called grocery receipts. That's the dollars that businesses, restaurants, hotels pay into the city and the county. Our grocery receipts from before we opened it up to last year grew 43%. And this community is much bigger than the community that I came from. So I think there's a lot of potential there to grow jobs in the, in the businesses downtown and throughout this county. I'm sure that based on my experience, there'll be outfitters and other folks that come to town that won't, won't set up business in this county.
Last two questions. Some of our endangered species that are in there, have they been considered?
Yes, sir. That is what the Habitat Conservation Plan has to do. We have to come up with a strategy to mitigate our endangered species, which is the snuffbox mussel. And that's one of the, one of the big challenges that we are having is, is making sure that our plan is approvable by the fisheries. Not only the endangered species, but to make sure that our hydraulic structure protects against the sea lamprey. So all those things are in play now, and we're working through those processes.
Last question. How do we balance some of the positive attributes of the Sixth Street Dam that's, that's going to be removed?
It will be removed, and that, that's a similar structure. This is the bladder will be moved upriver.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. What's the total cost projections for this?
Yeah, I'll have to, I'll have to put a little asterisk by this because this whole deal of dealing with the Habitat Conservation Plan, we don't know what the impact of, back to the question about the endangered species, is going to really cost just yet, but it's going to be somewhere in the $40 million range.
When I first started hearing about this project, I thought it was a $9 million range. Is that all the federal government, or government hoops you need to go through?
I can't go back in history. I know that when I do, my due diligence is part of, is part of the hiring process. Everything that I read, it was about a $36 to $37 million project. And what I read online and the information that was available through all the media, but back to my point earlier, the endangered species is a big deal for us, and we got to work through that. And we got, we have, we have the funds in place to take care of that.
I don't see you, Fisher Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. You had mentioned the city of Columbus's project.
Yes, sir.
And obviously, that's a completely different project than ours, but can you dwell on how they did it and what the impact is now that it was completed?
Yes, sir.
And I think they fast-tracked theirs because they wanted it done right away, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's another great question. And the, the good thing about this project, and that's why I feel confident about the process that's happened before I got here and where we are, is they're very similar. I was, was downtown. It's a two and a half mile... It's a two-and-a-half-mile reach of the river that was restored. We've breached two dams, two dams much larger than the five dams that we'll breach here. So very similar in that respect. And it took us well over 13 years from start to finish. And it was not that we had pushed back from all the federal agencies. We had to deal with two cities, two state governments, all the different federal agencies, the Corps of Engineers, and we had absolutely no problem that from any of those agencies. But it did take time to go through the processes. And that's what we're seeing here in this process to get through the permitting. It just takes time. We had to raise, that project was a $26 million project, and our split was about 60-40, 60 from the private sector and 40 from all the government agencies. So that's how that project evolved. And it was, once we got under construction, we did try to fast-track it, but it just takes time working in that river. And the river there is, you have dam release every day, so we have to get about eight hours to work in the river, and then you have to get out. So it's a process very similar to what we'll be dealing with here.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. The impact in Columbus is the way I measured is the number I gave you before, 43, over 40 percent increase in grocery receipts.
Okay. Thank you, Mike, Richard, and Steve.
Thank you.
Under request, our staff will assess that request, whether that's a budget item or a special item, or however that's going to be treated. Oh, and I wanted to note, too, that I just saw Ambassador Peter Sekia last night. He was planning to be here today. He had an injury that he took on over the weekend that made it not possible, but he wanted to convey his support as well for this.
Thank you so much.
Well, it's a former county chair day, and so we will now call yet another former county chair to the podium.
Keep showing up like bad pennies.
Sandy Frost-Geensman to give us an update on the Administrator, Controller, Search Committee, Subcommittee, I'm sorry, that meeting and that Sandy Chairs. Good morning.
Thank you very much, Chair Saulfeld. And I was noting that there are five, including Chair Saulfeld, there are five county chairs in the room today, so that is a chair day. Thank you very much for the opportunity to chair this committee. It has been really a wonderful opportunity, and it's been a great process. I really appreciate everyone's involvement in it. This is really to give you an update and talk to you about where we are in our process. So our first phase was the position assessment. You all, or most of you, probably took part in that and had a, we were working with Gov. HR, and hopefully you took part in an interview with either James Vitrenio or Eve Orhies as our lead staff, and hopefully you had an opportunity to express your opinion about what this position needed and what the county needs going forward. They took all of that data and created a position, sort of a job position opportunity. From that, we've created a position brochure wherein, I think we just approved it, like in the last couple of days. So, I mean, it's been, this is very current information. And with that, then, we are, the announcement about the position is going quite regionally, so we'll be posting the position regionally in our candidate recruitment. And then after the posting date, we will be, Gov. HR will be evaluating our candidates. And then at our November meeting, which is the second Thursday before your board meeting, they'll be giving us a notebook full of all of the candidates, and we will, it'll be somewhere probably between 8:00 and 10:00. And we'll boil that down to the ones that we want to interview. Guess it's somewhere between 3:00 and 5:00. We'll be then going through the interview process through the end of the year, and our goal is to have a candidate in place by the first quarter. So that's where we are. I can't say enough about James Vitrenio from Gov. HR. He's been terrific to work with. The committee has been very, very engaged. We've had great attendance at all the meetings. It's clear, everybody's reading all the materials. It really has been a good process. I'd be happy to answer any questions, Chair Saulfeld.
Maybe review the committee members, too, for the benefit of everyone here.
Oh, good. I'll do that by memory. Okay, from the commission, Mandy Bolter and Roger Morgan, and yourself, and?
Carol.
Carol. And then also from the community, myself, Berger Close, and Paul Doyle.
Okay, questions for Sandy. Good call.
Thank you, Chair. Define a little more what by first quarter means. I mean, before the first quarter, so by the end of the year or sometime during the first quarter?
Well, we're going to be looking at candidates, I mean, we're going to be looking at that notebook of candidates the second week in November. And so we're going to be running into the holidays. So I think, you know, in a best-case scenario, we'll have our interviews maybe completed by the end of the year or the end of January. And I would say by the, I think in all likelihood, by the end of the first quarter, by the end of March, we would have somebody in place.
Yeah, and actually, I always said Q1, so that's always been my thought somewhere. Goal would be between January and then end of March.
Yeah, and I think that's realistic.
Commissioner Skaggs?
Sandy, thanks for your work and for the entire committee. I enjoyed reading the posting, thought it was fabulous. One of the things that it mentions is that a successful candidate will intentionally engage with the diverse constituencies of the county. I wonder in our process, how are we going about doing that? So that is, what's the role of public input? And then what's going to be the role of commissioners that aren't on the search committee?
Right. Okay, so the word intentional was intentional. I mean, we actually had a conversation about the choice of the word at our committee. So we wanted to make sure that engaging diverse communities wasn't accidental, wasn't incidental, but was intentional. So that was a very, it was really quite a lively conversation, actually, and the importance of it. And Paul Doyle on our committee, I think, has really advocated for that position, as have all of the commissioners and everybody on the committee. So all of that said, in terms of the interviews, we were intentional about making sure that we had a diverse group of audiences listed as the people that had input on the position to begin with. And then as we move into the interview process, one of the things that has yet to be decided is how, it's going to partly depend on the candidates. Because it depends on, you know, obviously, once they are announced as part of the pool, it's part of public knowledge. And so it's going to depend a little bit about where they are in terms of how open or whether it's an open house type of, you know, process where we have the candidates and anybody that would like to come in. Again, that is going to be intentional, though, where we would invite an intentionally diverse audience to come and meet our candidate. I think with regard to the rest of the commission, that will partly be on an option, certainly wouldn't exclude the commission from being involved in the process of at least meeting the candidates. I don't know if that's a sufficient answer, or whether I, did I answer that like a politician?
No, no. Maybe.
Yeah. Can't take the politician out of the politician.
So is there going to be a chance for open public input when we get to a group of finalists?
Can I just add that these meetings are open meetings. These are not private meetings. They're posted. Anybody can kind of participate in the process.
Yeah, all the search committee meetings have been open.
Yes.
And they always include public comment, and they've been posted. So there has been opportunity for the public to be involved.
The other thing I wanted to add to what Sandy said on commissioner involvement, I don't think we've decided quite how to do this yet, whether the commissioners are there when we do interviews, or whether the interviews, you know, and then are asking questions, or whether we keep a tape, that anybody can review that. But we'll figure that out. Clearly, the intent is to involve all of you because you guys are going to, the ones that are not on the Subcommittee are going to be voting on the ultimate person.
And really, our consultant has really couched it as, it really depends on the candidates in terms of what's going to be appropriate based on all of that. But certainly, an open process is what we would be looking for. It's not my style to do things in a closed setting.
Okay, I just want to just urge the Subcommittee to keep this process as open as possible. I know 7:30 a.m. executive committee meetings aren't necessarily where you're going to get the greatest public input, so.
Well, and I would certainly say that that's been true.
Yes. So, you know, anything that can be done to intentionally invite the public to give its input, I think, would be useful both for the process and for when we do bring somebody on who has a real manatee to do the things that he or she may want to do in combination with the commission.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Commissioner Womack?
As I want to say, I appreciate your work and the work of the committee moving this along. How is this being posted and marketed to the taxpayers and voters about this important change that we're about to have with our administrator as we look for a new administrator about these open meetings?
How have the open meetings, like I said?
Yes, how have you posted? Where's it?
The meetings are posted, if I'm not mistaken, our meetings, our search meetings have been posted the way all county commission meetings are posted.
Correct.
The meetings that we've had so far for the search committee, it's been a meeting, a public meeting of the county, so it would be publicized the same way any other meeting is publicized.
Is there anyone here that could be specific on how that's done?
I'd have to defer to the county. I don't know.
Okay. I don't know. Clerk.
We do post all meetings on, in our office, on our floor, in the building. They are also posted online as well, those notices on Access Kent. I believe we might even, no, never mind. That is all.
Yes, and those are the ways that I've been familiar with, with online Access Kent, also postings in this building. So I've seen importance where people would say, not saying Kent County, but of these, this great governmental building where if you put the post on the front door, it's publicly posted.
Right. But it has been online also.
Yeah, and if it's online at Access Kent, I just think we should find some other ways to make sure that the community is aware of this, and I'll do all I can do to help let the public know. Thank you.
Sure, that's fine. Our next meeting is, if I'm not mistaken, November 11, second Thursday, at 7:30.
Okay, thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. 7:30 a.m. meetings certainly are not uncommon in the county. We have quite a few of them, including our executive committee meetings. A lot of our work groups happen at that time, too, and I've been able to attend a number of the meetings that you've chaired, so thank you very much. When it comes to the input, I just want to have you take a moment and kind of throw a spotlight on what Gov. did with the surveys. I thought that was a phenomenal process as a participant. I did get in one of the one-on-one slots to share, but I believe that was very extensive. Could you just give us a minute or two to elaborate on that?
Sure. We spent quite a bit of time developing the list of the community to be able to provide input one-on-one with Gov. HR. And Amy, can you know? How many people did they interview, and do you know how many people were surveyed?
Good morning. We interviewed, well, we invited to interview over 100 people. I believe the exact number was 108, including, oh, gosh, well over 50 people from the community. And we surveyed all of our employees and at least another 50 to 200 people from the community, so we did a pretty wide swath, both through the interviews and the survey process.
I know when we were compiling the list of where all these went to, a comment was made by the search firm that we were on the very high end of sending these surveys and getting, you know, the public involved in this process, so I feel very confident as well.
If it would be helpful, James prepared a PowerPoint presentation to us of the results of the survey, and I think that would be perfectly, I'm happy to have that shared. Again, it's public knowledge and part of the public domain. I think it's perfectly, I think you would all enjoy the results. Probably the thing you probably would most want to know is what are they, what is the characteristic that everybody was most looking for? And it was probably an even balance of visionary and continued steady leadership. So that's a lot to find, but it was probably the top thing that came out. But there's an entire list of the attributes and what order they came in, and I think that we can share that with the commission electronically.
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you, Chair. Not really a question as much as a comment as far as public notice and so forth. We all collectively represent every voter or every citizen in Kent County, so collectively we could go out to our cities and townships and villages and get the word out. Shouldn't be that complicated. We all, if it's a, take it out to your constituents and let them know about this, and I'm sure the county will provide some information for us, but all of us together can get the word out pretty effectively.
Any other comments? I don't, so, Commissioner Womack?
One last comment. When our founding fathers were putting together the government and wanted us to stay in contact with the public, of course, there was no online. So a lot of times, the public considered, once it was posted in the newspaper, it was official. So it looks like we've moved on to online, and we're kind of not using the newspaper. And that isn't going directly to you. That's just, as I'm talking to the rest of my commission, board members, something that we should look into when it comes to public posting, just something that we know is totally official. And maybe there's been some change. Because online, I could post something this morning, and I could say I officially posted. Not one board member here would know what I posted on Facebook this morning or on my website. So that's just a question about how this has switched over, and some of our senior citizens are not online.
Well, and that's an interesting comment because one of the things that I noted earlier today is that your media table is empty. And when I was Chair of the County Commission in 2010, that table was always full, and after meetings, there was somebody with a microphone talking to you about whatever happened in the meeting. So, I mean, I think all our government is not under the amount of scrutiny that it was, and I'm not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing. It is just a thing.
I used to subscribe to newspapers, and I don't anymore either.
Exactly right.
So let's have our clerk comment on that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. Actually, that's why I stopped short in my last comment to you. We do post on, with MLive, our Board of Commission meetings, but I stopped short because we don't post on, with MLive for these meetings such as this. And if that's something you guys are willing to entertain, then we will proceed as directed as far as posting goes. But we are in compliance with, you know, the Open Meetings Act and the manner in which we post. But I didn't want to, when I stopped short, I didn't want to lead you to believe that all meetings that occur here with the county, because there are a lot, and we do send out via a large email list to what, every month, what meetings are set to take place for the coming month. But I didn't want to lead you to believe that those are all posted on MLive.
Just this position would be the most important position that we feel, and every now and then, I think as commissioners, maybe we should talk about important ones, if we should at least have them posted on MLive because they have probably a bigger following than Access Kent with the public.
Well, and one other thing that needs to be mentioned is the solicitations. The request for solicitations went to all the local newspapers, including some of the lesser-known newspapers like the Grand Rapids Times and I think some other ones.
Elba Cero.
So we're blanketing the area with the actual applicant process on how people know that this position is open and that people are available to apply for.
I did read about that in the newspaper, but it did not let the public know that there would be meetings they could come to.
Yeah, the posting is very posted, but, you know, in terms of the meetings, that's something that we can certainly.
But you're doing a great job, just adding a little extra because I know this is a very important, high-profile position, and I wanted to add that what Phil Skaggs is saying is very important that the public knows, but doing a great job.
Clerk?
Mr. Chair, just want to also clarify, too, with that monthly meeting email, that recipients are included would be the media as well. So they do, the media does receive the month of meetings, and I thought that was important to bring to your attention as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Sandy before we let her go? Commissioner Bronstein?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. On that same note of the topic of how we get information out, I was at a presentation this past weekend. Oakland County uses all six social media sites to promote their county and promote what's going on and the people that live there. The thing you need to take back is newspapers, mails, and that, most people, 90 percent of people get their information from social media. of people get their information from social media, so it might be something that we take a look at what Oakland County's doing, and try to find out, are we doing enough to meet that 90% that use social media, to find out about events.
Okay, any other comments, I do not see any, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Sandy for your work, for sharing this, it's great to have you back involved, you knowing so much about how the county operates is critical, I think, and I'm very pleased with your leadership in this position, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, it's been an honor.
All right, let's move then to our next agenda item, Agenda Item Six in Public Comment, we have three minutes for anybody that has public comment, please state your name and your address.
Good morning, Jessica Ann Tyson, 2180 44th Street, Kentwood, Michigan, I stand before you today thanking you for this opportunity, but brace yourself, because I have a compliment. I'm a PR firm in the city of Kentwood, but in the city of Grand Rapids, I own a delightful southern cuisine restaurant called The Candy Down, where we have the best catfish, collard greens, macaroni cheese, all of those good things, I won't bore you with that, because you'll get hungry again, but I wanted to let you know that I have had two health inspections with Kent County, and a lot of times when you hear the health department is coming, you want to run and hide, because you're not sure that you've got, dotted all your i's and crossed all your t's, but I would like to say, found a friend in the health department, all of the sanitation workers were very thoughtful of the fact that I was a new business, and they were very thoughtful of the fact that they have a job to do too, so I just wanted to let you all know that I'm very, very thankful for the opportunity to have them to work beside along of our business, so thank you so much.
Thank you Jessica. Good morning.
Good morning, my name is Denavie, ah, here we go, I'm a little bit taller, I'm Denavie Moje, I live at 612 Pine Avenue Northwest here in Grand Rapids, and I'm here today because I am one of the founders and executive board members for a local advocacy group and political action committee called Equity PAC, and we've been very vocal, both electronically and in person at meetings, talking about the diversity of government, and that's a particular work group that I chair, and so we've been very invested and very involved in this conversation around the hiring of the new county administrator, we acknowledge and amend this board on the process thus far, I just heard her presentation, and I'm really excited about this subcommittee being so intentional about engaging the broader community, as a body that services a constituency of over 600,000 residents, this crucial decision on who the new administrator will be is, is one that our, our members, as well as the community, is very invested in, we came here today primarily to urge this body to kind of employ a process for hiring this county administrator, similar to the one the city of Grand Rapids is employing right now, with fulfilling the seat for the new city manager, I'm not sure how familiar you guys are with that process, but the community is being engaged around the profile for, yeah, I see Betsy's nodding her head, around the profile for this candidate, i.e. what those priorities are, going a step beyond the postings in the office, and engaging the broader community electronically, I heard this gentleman mention, all six social media platforms are used by another government, but that's to engage people today, and what we like to do with Equity PAC is not only assist in this process, be a part of this process, and, and help with this process, because we recognize and acknowledge that most residents don't even know what the county administrator does, and it's a crucial seat, and we haven't even hired a county administrator in decades, so for a lot of residents, maybe it's not enough to walk into the building and see the paper posted that there's a subcommittee hiring a county administrator, it may be necessary to do some town halls, first educating people on the scope and breadth of that executive function, inviting them to make a profile, to help direct what the county's going to do going forward, because we truly believe that this decision will impact the county and its constituents for decades to come, so that was the gist of what I came to say this morning, thank you again for the work that you guys are doing, you guys are spectacular individuals, I see a lot of allies in this room in improving the community, and again, Equity PAC, we would love to be a part of helping and continuing this conversation around increasing public engagement and having community buy-in in this crucial hiring decision, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Morning.
Hello, my name is Russ Lomsted, I am also here on behalf of Equity PAC, and just wanted to take a, a moment to read a, kind of a more officialized statement than what Denavie just did, although I feel she, she summed up everything eloquently, Equity PAC is, is a fast-growing political action committee mobilizing time and money to advance more equitable policy and practice and officials, we'd like to thank the commission for responding to our initial questions via email regarding the hiring process, we see the retirement of the current county administrator as an important moment for the county, given the influence of executive function of the position, we are supportive and advocate for the process similar to what Grand Rapids is using, ensuring a very inclusive approach to the hiring of the new city manager, their process includes intentional public input regarding from regular citizens in all parts of the city to develop a profile, a nationwide search for candidates, apparent well-communicated process including timelines, and a final decision will be made, and the ability for the public to ask questions of the final candidates, publicly ask questions of the final candidates, we appreciate that the county is gathering stakeholder information to build a profile, and it does sound as if finalists will be available for public comment or interviews during the final, final portion of the process, it also sounds as if this, this process will be regional, we hope that expands to a national search as it's more befitting of such an important position of one with, of the most populated counties in Michigan, as this process moves forward, we at Equity PAC hope the commission will consider a very deliberate approach to building a candidate profile that has a true diversity of citizen input, including racial, economic, and LGBTQ diversity, in short, looking beyond just institutional leaders, strong public and ongoing communication regarding the process and how the decision will be made, and ensuring that the hiring subcommittee is reflective of the diverse community the administrator will serve, PAC certainly has a diverse membership from all over Kent County, and we would be interested in speaking into what kind of skills, attributes, and leadership abilities the county administrator, county administrator would need to lead us into the next decade, this would be an excellent opportunity to educate the community on what an administrator does, since the last search hasn't happened for several decades, it may be worth having town halls to discuss how the community landscape has changed and how the position has changed, we appreciate your time and the effort in this matter, and we are available to help the commission and, and its staff as needed, in thinking to ensure the search is transparent and allows for public to speak into its hiring, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good morning Commissioners. Please state your name and address.
Pastor Daniel Scott, 1204 Hovey, Southwest, Grand Rapids, Michigan, once again, I'm here to speak for the most discriminated against and abused citizens of Kent County, foreign children, another reason to honor our mission statement, which reads, "The mission of Kent County Government is to be an effective and efficient steward in delivering quality services for our diverse community, our priority is to provide mandated services which may be enhanced and supplemented by additional services to improve the equality of life for all citizens," and I would include the unborn in that statement, when I was here two weeks ago, one of the commissioners over here, I forget which one, but it was at the end of your meeting, stated that he wanted to affirm that all of you stood with the recent resolution from Washington to condemn and stop all hate groups, quote-unquote, well certainly, I would think you would agree that everyone involved in this murderous industry, including the murdering abortionists, are also hate, they hate the unborn. A procedure, another procedure, which is used by these hate groups is the partial birth murder procedure, guided by ultrasound, the murderer grabs the baby's legs with forceps, the baby's leg is pulled out into the birth canal, the murderer delivers the entire body except for the head, the murderer jams scissors into the baby's skull, the scissors are then opened to enlarge the hole, the scissors are removed and a suction catheter is inserted, the child's brains are sucked out, causing the skull to collapse, the dead baby is then removed, I'd like to pass around fixtures of this procedure.
Thank you.
Thank you. God bless you all.
Is there any other public comment this morning?
I do want to address something regarding public comment, and specifically Pastor Scott, your, your comments that you've been making over the past several meetings, first of all, we appreciate your comments, we appreciate your passion, to be honest with you, I suspect the majority of the people on this board take up your concerns and so forth, but we also have to operate within our rules that we have for the county, and one of, two rules that are relevant, that is that matters, that our, for public comment, need to be either about like an agenda item or something that the, is an issue before the county that we have the ability to act on, and that it not be unduly repetitive, I did look into your issue, your request that you've made about making the county a sanctuary county for the unborn, and I am told per our council, under Michigan law, that is something that the county cannot do, and so I, I just wanted you to know that we looked at that, that impacts, you know, one of these elements that we look at for the public comment, I'm not trying to be disrespectful, again, I understand your point, I'm, I'm, and I suspect the majority of our commissioners are sympathetic, I would just please ask you to understand our rules, and I'm happy to share you with a, a copy of those with you going forward, so that we can make sure that we're not being either unduly repetitive, or that we're talking about items that the county simply does not have the ability to take action on, so, just wanted to leave that with you, I'm happy to talk to you one-on-one too, either after the meeting, or sometime this, this, next week, thank you. We'll move then to item number seven, our agenda, which is the consent agenda, and I would call on Commissar Vice Chair Bolter.
Mr. Chair, I move consent agenda, A and B.
I didn't hear that, I'll support by Commissioner Breedy, questions on the consent agenda? I see none, so this is a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, on the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays, the motion passes, consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, we move then to Agenda Item Number Eight, we have resolutions this morning, six of them, I'll start with the first one, and Commissioner Mast.
Thank you Chair, I move Resolution 71, which is the approval of monies flowing from the state through our childcare funds, I move that resolution.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Breedy, questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you Chair, just want to express appreciation for the, providing your history that was provided by that, that was very helpful.
Other questions or comments? I see none, this is a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
On the motion to adopt Resolution 71, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays, the motion passes, the resolution is.
Thank you, for our second resolution, I will call again on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you Chair, I move Resolution 72 involving some distribution of funds from our community development department.
Support. Support by Commissioner Corndyke, questions or comments? I see none, so we will again ask Madam Chair to call, roll, to, call, roll.
Thank you Mr. Chair, on the motion to adopt Resolution 72, Commissioner Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, 19 ayes, zero nays, the motion passes, resolution is adopted.
Thank you, for our third resolution, I will call on Commissioner Corndyke.
Thank you Chair Saulfeld, I would like to move Resolution Number 73 of today's date, Kent County Community Action, Community Development, Housing Commission.
Support by Commissioner Hennessy, questions or comments on this resolution? I see none, and it is not, not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye, any opposed, motion passes, for Resolution Four, I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you Chair, I'm pleased to move for the adoption of Resolution 74 of today's date.
Is there support?
Support.
Support by Commissioner Corndyke, questions or comments? I see none, it is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes, we move to the fifth resolution, and I call on Commissioner Womack.
I move to the motion for Resolution 75.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Morgan, questions or comments on this resolution? I see none, it is a roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Thank you Mr. Chair, on, on the motion to adopt Resolution 75, Commissioners Vonck.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Steck.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breevy.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Tallon.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays, the motion passes, resolution is adopted.
Thank you, for our sixth and final resolution, I will call on Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you Mr. Chair, I move Item 70 to date.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Coleman, other questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Saulfeld, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the committee for the review of the land bank, being the board representative on that board, I appreciated the openness of the process, just want to let, let everyone know that if you ever have any questions about the land bank, how it operates, all of our financials or strategic plan are all online, do you have a landline that someone picks up, you know, when you call, I'm sure the executive director, if you ever have questions on any projects that we're working on, would be more than happy to answer that, and hopefully, moving forward, maybe the land bank can get out more clearly what we do, and try to clear up the, you know, misconceptions, and maybe we can do a better way that way, we are starting our, our strategic plan, we've had our first meeting, we are waiting for this to be adopted, to order to look at those and incorporate those ideas.
Thank you, any other, Commissioner Tallon?
Thank you Chair, this resolution is another good example of the ongoing concerns that I have about the process that we have in our standing rules for dealing with these kinds of reports and recommendations, there are four recommendations that, as I understand this resolution, are part of the resolution, four recommendations that I take issue with and have concerns with, and given the way that we're operating, I'm going to have to vote no on this resolution, because I would like to see more discussion, more information, more debate by this commission about those items, so I feel badly about that, I think it reflects less on the committee work, which I think was great, and more on the process, which I, I, is, is not the best process to get the best result, thank you.
Other comments, Commissioner Womack?
Resolution, it makes it six recommendations, and I was wondering if there was someone here from the committee that could explain, just state those six, just to put it on record for the public, what those six recommendations were. If that's possible, if not, fine.
I'm going to ask Vice Chair Bolter to respond to that, sit and edit up.
just felt we should be on record so that if they return in writing about these recommendations and agree to them, or they don't agree to them, but if they do agree to them, what the public can expect, what we're supposed to tell our constituents and voters. So I just wanted to read what those recommendations were and be able to tell the public their response was. Number one, and your board did a great job, number one is increased transparency. Number two, mission creep, I was very concerned with that as well as Commissioner Talan. But number three, property conveyance, lead remediation, continued private-public partnerships, six, strategic planning. Those are the titles of those six recommendations, and I just want to get those on record so that once they respond, we can tell the public what to look forward to from the Kent County Land Bank in the future. Thank you.
Can I ask for a roll call vote?
Sure. Chair. Commissioner Talan? I'm sorry. Commissioner.
I was so used to.
Wow. These are cadres, too. Wow. Well, I, thank you, Chair. This was a difficult challenge in charge to this committee. As most of us know, there's strongly held and very divergent perspectives on the land bank, its performance, and its future. And while I, as I go through the report, might have phrased some of these things differently, overall, I thought it was a very thoughtful balancing of these competing interests, and given the nature of the recommendation, which is to really challenge the land bank to go back and consider and respond to these various points, I think it's an appropriate way to go with this process.
Okay. Commissioner Hennessy?
I'd like to just, I want to just clarify my own mind. We've already sort of received the report, and so if now, if we adopt it, what does that actually mean? What are we doing if we adopt it? What does that mean for the way we operate?
Right, right. Receiving the report only means that a subcommittee approved this, and one cannot say that the board of commissioners stands behind it. So if a report is done and it's received and no further action is taken, for example, they can't say, now, here's a report that the county had done and stands behind. They could only say that the subcommittee stands behind it. By having the board vote on it and adopt it, then you can say that the board of commissioners has approved or has adopted the report.
And exactly, then, what does that mean? Because these are recommendations that don't have to be carried out.
It doesn't change the fact that they're reaching. It just changes who, under whose authority is this report coming from.
From subcommittee.
This came up, I think it was when we had the Community Collaboration Work Group, and the point was made that if the board does not adopt it, it's not, it's not, you can't argue that the county stands behind the report. Only the subcommittee that was created stands behind the report, and to a lot of people, that makes a big deal. I remember at the time, someone saying, well, if the county did it, what good is this report in terms of saying that the county stands behind it? So that's why that provision is in the rules. Any other questions? Go ahead.
I don't have another question. I'm tempted to vote no, and I do it with great respect for the committee and the work. I guess I'm not going to stand behind this and all the shells and shoulds that are a part of this report. From my perspective, I am going to vote no.
Okay. Any other? Commissioner Coleman?
Just a quick comment on number eight, the future review. Having been on the subcommittee and thoroughly exhausted of all land bank conversations, it does seem short as well, although I do think it's prudent to, you know, reassess, you know, land bank within these recommendations, and it aligns well with the timing, as I understand it, of the land bank's own strategic process. So it aligns to their upcoming strategic plan of the next three years.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Chair. I thought the subcommittee report was thorough, incredibly detailed, and when you look at the list of participants who gave presentations and took their time to approach the subcommittee, it's extensive. That's on page two. I wanted to just make a.
...the Legislative Committee for consideration as an option for one of our legislative priorities.
Thank you.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saufeld. So, these eight recommendations will all sum, or what is the process that they would go through the process of the committee, the subcommittee before here? Is there a process if anybody wants in action on any of these, discussion on any of these? What, who moves it to put it into the process?
Well, I think just to be clear, there's one specific recommendation that would go per this resolution through the Legislative Committee. That's item number seven. And beyond that, we're reaffirming the report, so we were saying that the county board stands behind these recommendations. Beyond that, if you wanted to bring some special action, I mean, that's always an option that you have. But there's nothing that we need to do after we adopt the report, other than item seven, which is being referred to the Legislative Committee.
The issue, if I may, that I hear is number two. So how, then, that issue should just be brought to the Land Bank Board itself, or do we, as, through the committee process and then the board, take action on that kind of thing?
Well, clearly, this report will go to the Land Bank, and they'll know this is what the Board of Commissioners has adopted. If, for some reason, you know, you don't feel that's addressed, or whatever, I mean, you're, as I said earlier, ultimately, this is the final board that either, that did create it and has the ability to end it. Other than that, I don't know what authority we have to force them to do any other change.
From the body motions I get from the chair, that's something, we don't have the authority.
Like, we wouldn't have the ability to go in and, as I understand it, make a specific change to how they operate. We can make these recommendations, but we can't. I, you know, when we started this process, I thought we could, because I thought, gosh, if you are the body that creates it, it would seem like you have the ability to make modifications. But apparently, we don't. I've since been told under the law, so it's kind of an all-or-nothing thing, where if we don't feel that the Land Bank is operating as its, our real only action is to end it.
We also appoint your board.
Say again?
We also appoint board members.
Yeah, we do appoint board members, too. Good point. Commissioner Tallon.
Thank you, Chair. I feel a need to be a little more specific about my concerns with these, now that we've had further discussion. So I want to go on the record to indicate my concern with recommendation two, the concept of mission creep, but more specifically, the importance of affordability. And I frankly feel like if the Land Bank is able to influence housing affordability in our county, if there's a slight mission creep involved in that, and the board members feel that is appropriate, I'm okay with that. So I'm not particularly okay with that recommendation, and don't want to go on record as supporting it by adopting the entire report. In terms of property conveyance, I do not have any dissatisfaction with, that has been happening with the Land Bank. And so I do have concerns about that recommendation, and at this point, I'm not supportive of it, and would love to have this board have some more discussion about this. I know it already has happened at the subcommittee, but would love to have the board talk about that some more. And then finally, I had a problem with seven, but I recognize that will be coming back to LHR. But the future review, it's still, the question's been raised about the three year. I guess I'm wondering about why, or about the, yeah, the three versus five, why we chose to review it in three years rather than the five, and what's the point of that? As others have suggested, that seems, given the large amount of work that it went into this review, seems certainly premature. So those three areas I have concerns about. Thank you.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, in my community, there's a housing crisis, so being elected in the 17th District, concerned about the distribution of power, property, and equity. And since Kent County Land Bank, as much as I do support it, plays a role in that, I just felt we should be on record, so that if they return in writing about these recommendations and agree to them, or they don't agree to them, but if they do agree to them, what the public can expect, well, we're supposed to tell our constituents and voters. So I just wanted to read what those recommendations were, and be able to tell the public their response was. Number one, and your board did a great job, number one is increased transparency. Number two, mission creep, I was very concerned with that, as well as Commissioner Tallon. But number three, property conveyance, lead remediation, continued private-public partnerships, six, strategic planning. Those are the titles of those six recommendations, and I just wanted to get those on record, so that, once they respond, we can tell the public what to look forward to from the Kent County Land Bank in the future. Thank you.
Can I ask for a roll call vote?
Sure.
Chair.
Commissioner Tallon. I'm sorry, Commissioner. I was so used to.
Wow, these are cadence, too. Wow.
Well, I, thank you, Chair. This was a difficult challenge, and charge to this committee. As most of us know, there's strongly held and very divergent perspectives on the Land Bank, its performance, and its future. And while I, as I go through the report, might have phrased some of these things differently, overall, I thought it was a very thoughtful balancing of these competing interests. And given the nature of the recommendation, which is to really challenge the Land Bank to go back and consider and respond to these various points, I think it's an appropriate way to go with this process.
Commissioner Hennessy.
I'd like to just, I want to just clarify my own line. We've already sort of received the report, and so if now, if we adopt it, and it, what does that actually mean? What are we doing if we adopt it? What does that mean for the way we operate?
Right, right. Receiving the report only means that a subcommittee approved this, and one cannot say that the Board of Commissioners stands behind it. So if a report is done, and it's received, and no further action is taken, for example, they can't say, now here's a report that the county had done and stands behind. They could only say that the subcommittee stands behind it. By having the board vote on it and adopt it, then you can say that the Board of Commissioners has approved, or has adopted, sorry, adopted the report.
And exactly, then, what does that mean? Because these are recommendations that don't have to be carried out.
It doesn't change the fact that they're written. It just changes who, under whose authority is this report coming from.
From subcommittee report.
This came up, I think it was when we had the Community Collaboration Work Group, and the point was made that if the board does not adopt it, it's not, it's not, you can't argue that the county stands behind the report. Only the subcommittee that was created stands behind the report. And to a lot of people, that makes a big deal. I remember at the time, someone saying, well, if the county did it, what good is this report? In terms of saying that the county stands behind it. So that's why that provision is in the rules. Any other questions? Go ahead.
No, I don't have another question. I'm tempted to vote no, and I do it with great respect for the committee and the work. I guess I'm not going to stand behind this and all the shals and shoulds that are a part of this report. From my perspective, I am going to vote no.
Okay. Any other, Commissioner Coleman.
Just a quick comment on number eight, the future review. Having been on the subcommittee and thoroughly exhausted of all Land Bank conversations, it does seem short as well, although I do think it's prudent to, you know, reassess, you know, Land Bank within these recommendations, and it aligns well with the timing, as I understand it, of the Land Bank's own strategic process. So it aligns to their upcoming strategic plan of the next three years.
Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I thought the subcommittee report was thorough, incredibly detailed, and when you look at the list of participants who gave presentations and took their time to approach the subcommittee, it's extensive. That's on page two. I wanted to just make a comment that, when I look at the Land Bank and what they do, I think one of the main advantages is when they have a property, they're able to clear the title smoothly. But it makes me wonder if, at a higher level, beyond what this county has authority for, if clearing titles isn't something that needs to be addressed at higher levels to make that process smoother, and better, and cleaner. And I just think that point should be made, and just something that maybe Legislative Committee can add that to the list, as it perplexes me why it has to get to the Land Bank point in order for properties to have clear title. And I will admit, I don't know enough to know why it is so encumbered and challenging that it has to get to this point. But I do know that this is an important part for this process, because I've stayed on top of this. I've watched properties in my district get hung up on unclear titles, and then sit, and then go into foreclosure and have challenges. So it's just something that I think is a bigger picture to the, needs to be stated, and that's why I wanted to share that comment this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was just going to say, the review of three years, I don't have a problem with that. I think, this being our first review of the Land Bank, formal one, I think it would take longer, just because it's the first. And I think now that we have a template for review, I think it'll.
Be one meeting.
It'll be one meeting, or it'll be relatively quick. So I don't, years, I think, more. The quicker we look at it, we address things quicker if we have problems.
A lot should change in the real estate market in three years. Any other comments or questions? I see none. A roll call vote has been requested, so I will ask Madam Clerk to call the roll.
On the motion to adopt Resolution seventy, where am I? Seventy-six. Commissioner Ivanka.
Yes.
Antor.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioner Steck.
Yes.
Commissioner Ponstein.
Yes.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Breeby.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Hennessy.
No.
Tallon.
Joe.
Volkowsky.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Corndike.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Alpheld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen ayes, two nays. The motion passes. Resolution seven-six is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And with that, we move to Agenda Item Nine, which is public comments. It's only one minute. Public comments. Are there any public comments this morning? Pastor Scott.
Thank you, Chairman. I'll happily, humbly take you up on your offer. But based on the words of Jesus Christ, I would ask many commissioners to be a part of this meeting as possible. And I'd like to invite some of my fellow pastors and concerned citizens. Several of your commissioners have come to me personally and thanked me for being here, and have invited me to come back, so I want you to know that. Plus, I could finish all of this if you'd just give me ten or fifteen minutes. I would not have to come back for multiple times. I just want to, I'm in the process of just these truths, this information, because two years ago, I didn't know a lot about this. And I'd be happy to do that, but I'd be happy to talk with you after the meeting about all this. And, you know, this is a public forum, so I think everything should be done out in the open.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move then to reports, and I will call on Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hey, we had our dedication out there for Phase One. We had a great, great showing. We thanked the donors. We raised seventeen million dollars, over seventeen million dollars for a forty-four million dollar project. We're on to Phase Two, and it should be done. Phase Two will be the front door of the terminal, and it should be completed in late nineteen. So more construction at the airport. Airports are always under construction. It's a good thing to see. We've had the last four years of record growth. We're on pace to have a fifth. And for this Irishman, that's a good deal. So.
Very good. Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Chair. I have two reports this morning. I'm going to start with the Kent County Parks Foundation. I mentioned at our last meeting that we have a new interim executive director, and he happens to be here today. So for those who don't know Sam Moore, he is here in the audience, and I'm sure he'd have a few extra minutes to stay afterward if anyone him or doesn't know him, or would like to introduce themselves to him. He's here. Sam, if you want, raise your hand quick. Thank you very much. And then, we had a very successful Firefly Ball. I'd like to thank all those who encouraged people to attend, or attended yourself. All of that makes a difference and impacts how we're able to support our Kent County Parks. And with that, I'll go on to the budget process. As Chair of the Finance Committee, we are on our way. And I know that we have a blend of new commissioners. We have a blend of experienced commissioners. If anyone would like to meet with Wayman, discuss the process, please feel free to make an individual appointment with him. He extended that as an option. And I, myself, when I was a newer commissioner, I did take quite a bit of time with Darrell and did just that. So I highly recommend that. And for those who've done this for a while, maybe you want to refresh her and want to spend some time with Wayman on the process, please feel free to contact him. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other reports? Commissioner Breeby?
Yeah, just wanted to report on the Lead Task Force. We met, I think it was last week, and we're narrowing down our recommendations. We'll have a report by the end of the year. One of the things that we've been discussing is related to the Land Bank, and our recommendation to the Dime about lead remediation. So we're trying to narrow the scope for that and come out with some solid recommendations. Our next meeting is October eighteen, I believe, and it will be at one o'clock at the Health Department.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Before we meet again, the Milage Review Committee will begin its intensive, one-week review of every request for senior millage money, which we take a look back at how the money was spent, how they account for it over the last year, any new requests that we have for consideration. And this is a, you know, as, you know, it'll be coming in front of you again, as we get to the approval of the decisions that are made, because it's a very intensive process.
Any other reports? I see none, so we'll move to miscellaneous. Excuse me, got a frog in my throat. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Tuesday, I was able to accept an award on behalf of the Board of Commissioners in our efforts, a very comprehensive effort to end veteran homelessness in Kent County. I believe we're the only county in the state, and one of maybe forty or so across the country. So it's a really big deal. A lot of people got involved. The biggest problem was going out recognizing the homeless where they're at. And so now we have the ability to get them all off the streets, either temporary or permanent, depending on their situation. So it was very good. I wish I had the award here. It's really a cool award. I left it on my kitchen table, but I'll bring it tomorrow. And I'm very proud to be a part of that. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saufeld. Thirty-one years ago, Joanne and I felt the call to get more involved in the governmental home of public service. And in doing so, I joined with a group that I felt one of the major planks and purposes of it was to seek smaller government and lower taxes. And so I've been a member of that group, and we, as a Board of Commissioners, have acted very well, and probably a few more opportunities, in spinning out entities that can better operate, maybe on their own, like we did with the airport, like we did with the zoo, like we did with mental health services, looking for areas where it's better to not be within the constraints of the total governmental, but that there's more private sector, more involvement in that way. And so, you all know that in the election of twenty sixteen, I supported a tax increase. And if, and one of the news reporters in Grand Rapids, are you the same Harold Voorhees I followed for twenty years? And I said, yes, I am. He said, well, you never supported a tax increase. I said, I wouldn't say never, but I am very discretionary in whether or not I will vote for a tax increase. But I went about it because I felt it was the right thing, as to get these entities out to where they were accountable directly to the people, as to what their funding is, not the appropriation process of the county. And I think that's the smart way to move, and the right way to do it. But now I believe we've come to the point where we have to look at, what can we do to reduce the cost of government to the residents and the businesses in Kent County? And I believe that part of the money that the county has saved, the windfall of the twenty million dollars over the term of the millage, that a portion of that, and I believe and hopeful that a portion of others, we notified the public here some time ago, that we did some refinancing of bonds, and we saved the citizens of Kent County four million dollars over a time. I think we, as a board, especially we in the Finance Committee, should be looking at that and coming up with some recommendations. I would, I think we should see a portion of that money that we are collecting and relieve of our obligation to the zoo should be returned to the families and the businesses in the county. And I think, over the time, and many can, and I would argue that it's good for the community. And I'm hoping that some of these dollars will come back in from businesses and from individuals to the other cultural entities within our community. And so I think it's just, it's not going to happen by chance. It's got to happen by us saying, I think we want to take a close look at where we are as we move into the twenty-eighteen budget process. In the business that I've been a part of and in for, since I was a teenager, when we came to the end of the year, we took an inventory. We took an inventory to know what are our assets, and what are our obligations. And I think one of my fellow commissioners earlier had mentioned something about, we should have a list of who do we owe, that. And we should take a look at, and I mentioned some of them in my letter to you of September sixteen, some of the entities that I think we should take a closer look at. What kind of fund balances are we holding or handling in some of the other entities in the county? So that's the reason of my letter to each of you, that I think it's time that we have a reduction in the property tax from the county, and that we find out through the Finance Committee what that should be, how long that should be. I don't want it to be my guess or anybody else's guess. I just ask that we would have a good discussion and a good look at, a view at, what are our resources and assets, and what are our obligations? And then, from that, I think we can make better decisions for the twenty-eighteen budget. So, thank you, Mr. Chair, for letting me express myself.
Good thing the Whitewater people aren't here. No, of course, we will do that with the budget process, and I think you're kind of getting at something we looked at a few years ago, too, of the mandated and non-mandated service process. I know we went through that one year during the Finance Committee budget review. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Saufeld. I appreciate your comments, Commissioner Voorhees. Along those same lines, during the State Treasurer's speak, things may look good now, year two, three, and now, there seems to be some problems looming for the state of Michigan. Just to add to maybe Harold and the budgeting process, I would love to see multi-year budgets, so we could look ahead and know what's facing. I mean, if we're going to stay this flush, and things are going to get really good, then yes, I could support that. But everything I'm hearing out of Lansing is just the opposite. There's going to be some tough challenges in the next few years, and I think we need to know that information, too. But I appreciate your comments, Harold. Second of all, I, you know, I'd stated that I appreciated the report on the Land Bank. When I was first appointed to that board, Chair Steensma told me, said, you know, I want to appoint you, you know, I don't know if it's going to be an easy committee, but I, one thing I know you'll do is, you'll do the due diligence, take a look at it, and try to make it perform like other things we do. Hopefully, I have done that. And from there, I've never heard anything from any of the commissioners. Stan, I didn't really understand your vote on this. I didn't understand what you said on that. All I am is a representative of this commission, and if someone on this commission has a problem, you know, just pick it up and call. Because the thing that's really getting tiring for me on that committee is that every time I stand for reelection, it's me alone that's the supporter of the Land Bank. And I want to reaffirm that the Land Bank was created, as Chair Saufeld said, by this full commission. If you folks don't think I'm doing the right work on that board, you know, you've got the opportunity to remove me. But I just want to say, it's been one of the most rewarding experiences, but it's also been very frustrating when I can be attacked personally and professionally for just being on that board. On more of a positive note, I wanted to thank the county commissioners that were at the Michigan Association of Counties Annual Meeting, who supported me in our caucus. I know a couple got locked out. They'll take a look at that. Be elected as the at-large board member to the Michigan Association of Counties. All six caucuses in the state of Michigan supported me. I really appreciated the Kent County Commissioners that were at the meeting and supported me. One good thing about the layout of Michigan Association of Counties is that southwest Michigan is well-represented. I've got one of the at-large seats, and Ottawa County's member, Don Disacole, also has one of the at-large seats, and then we get two in addition. So we've got four people on that board, and I think it's important. What we do in southwest Michigan, well, not might be, is a little different than a lot of people do around the state. A lot of people look to us for the things that we do, how we do them. So I'm honored to have served. I'm honored to have gotten the votes I did. And I'm on, for three years this time, I filled a vacancy last time, so I appreciate your support.
Thank you, and I do thank you as well for your service on the Michigan Association of County Board. It's nice to have that representation from Kent County. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Just a couple of items. I attended the same session that Commissioner Ponstein did from the Treasurer, Nick Corey. And while the economy is doing well, he certainly lays out that there are financial challenges ahead of us, and as the state deals with some fairly substantial demands on them, that demand will trickle down to us. So we're going to have to continue to deal with that. On a more positive, I had the pleasure last Friday, participating in the dedication opening of FedEx's new facility in Walker. All I can say is that the United States Postal Service better watch out. This is an incredible facility, very complex, very sophisticated, and large. So it was a night, nice event. And then, also participated yesterday in the grand opening of Move Systems, a new facility, manufacturing facility in Walker, which makes these solar-powered food trucks. It's very interesting. The governor was there. It was a very nice event. And one of the aspects of that, which I found very interesting, is that their facility, they also have a process with, an agreement with Kennewah Hill Schools, and they have classes on how to deal with, how to develop skills in the manufacturing industry. They actually take kids out of the classes and put them on-site. So you talk about workforce development. It's just a phenomenal model for how they greet these kids, even at the fifth, sixth, seventh grade on up. So I'm looking forward to see how that works.
Commissioner Hennessy.
I appreciate the seriousness of the comments and the perspectives of the other commissioners. On a more lighthearted note, it is time to put a little polka love in your heart. And Polaski Days opens up Sunday at two o'clock at the Diamond Street Hall with the Pledge of Allegiance, the National Anthem, the Polish anthem, and the introduction of the Queen and Court. And then it will continue through the week, with the halls open the weekend of the sixth, seventh, and eighth, and the parade on Saturday morning, which will be on the West Side this year. It alternates between the Northeast and the Northwest Side. And so I invite you all to join us, two o'clock, for the opening, and anytime through the weekend.
Go West Side.
Go West Side, go Northeast Side, you know, just, it's a very, it's an inclusive event, and everybody is welcome. We're all Polish, next week.
Commissioner Volkowski.
Yes, being Polish every day. I'll simply, you know, I don't want to leave Commissioner Voorhees's comments unresponded to.
Yeah, I don't believe it's relevant. So again, I look forward to continue to work with Commissioner Voorhees on this, and my comments are said with nothing but respect and disagreement on the facts.
Commissioner Rollback.
I just want to say thank you to Art Prize for what they're doing every year here in Kent County. They are definitely bringing a lot of grocery seats to us this week. I did enjoy it this weekend, as there was a concert put on by a board that I'm a part of that's associated with Art Prize this weekend. Also want to remember Timothy O'Neill, a state trooper who died in an accident this week. And I want to thank all my fellow commissioners at the Michigan Association of Commissioners Conference in Mackinac Island for all their support up there. I mean, I'm a rookie. It's my first time in Mackinac Island. They showed me around, and just a great Board of Commissioners, and it was great to get a chance to see some of you from behind, you know, behind the board seats. Also, when I talked a little bit about social media today, I do think it's great that we are posting on social media and that we increased the social media. But also, with the term "fake news" out there, I do think it's very important that, even though most people only look for a newspaper when they run out of toilet paper at home, many times in the community, when I hear something or somebody reads something on the internet, we will double-check that with a newspaper or with radio, because radio and newspaper have to answer... Especially radio, they have to answer to the FCC, Federal Communications Commission. Radio and newspapers can be sued. The hackers are not sued. We have foreign governments who have affected elections by online fake news, and I doubt if they'll be sued. So we do have to have some way that the people can know this is official when we put some things out. But once again, just want to thank all my commissioners for being so sociably polite at Mackinac Island, because I was like a fish out of water up there. That was my first time up there. And great meeting today.
Commissioner Breeby.
Thank you, Chair. Today, at twelve o'clock at the Health Department, Community Health Advisory Committee. You all are invited. We'll have lunch. We'll hear a couple updates from Families Against Narcotics, and our prosecutor, Chris Becker, will be there. We'll also hear about Vision to Learn, which is a program providing glasses for schoolchildren. And then, we'll also hear an update on the Belmont groundwater situation. So please join us.
Thank you. Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just in regards to Commissioner Polkowski's comments, appreciate them, but I still go back to about millages. Yes, we do seem to approve a lot of millages, almost everyone that comes down the pike. But there's also, I'm in the process of trying to do a report on how many people, they have no skin in the game that are voting for these millages that don't pay property tax. That's a huge number. So it is easy to approve them when you're not actually being held to pay for a lot of this stuff. So that would be my one comment. I'll let you know when I complete my report.
Okay. Any other comments? I see none. They don't have anything to add, other than, when do we meet at our next meeting? Not eight-thirty? Six p.m., right. So with that, I will call on Vice Chair Bolter to adjourn the meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn subject to the call of the chair from Thursday, October twelve, at six p.m.
Support. All in favor? Anything to say? Aye.
So we are adjourned.